Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. Thanks Greg. All right, we'll take comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Broad array of. Wave your hand if you have comments not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda to item number three, budget communication. Do you want to introduce that David, or would you like me to do that?
Your call.
Why don't you go ahead, I know the administration's done a lot of work on Q and A, so we can kick that off.
So I think people are aware that a couple of meetings ago, the school board looked for and took feedback from the community, school board members kind of categorized and put some of the questions specific to what was coming in from the public, and I think we've made copies for people, and those are available, and I think Elizabeth, you and the board maybe want to walk through some of those, but this was in the spirit of trying to get back to folks, the community, in being responsive to the questions that were asked.
Yeah, thank you David, I think as folks recall, on May 3rd, the board generated four categories of feedback. All right, we'll work on that.
We're going to turn it up a little bit more.
This and closer, okay, how's that? How is that now?
A little closer.
Test, test? Is that better? Okay. I'm not going to be able to take a drink of coffee. So we categorized community feedback in terms of the budget vote that was defeated the second time into four categories, one was on sustainability and financial trends, the other was on labor negotiations, the third was on board/district leadership, and the fourth was on the Rebel nickname, so rather than go through the detail, I think there were enough copies made of responses to several of the areas of concern that were generated at that May 3rd meeting, but I think what we'd like to do for this is kind of go through each category, I know individual board members may have some clarifications on items, but really hit these at more of a top level, and encourage folks to both look at the handout, as well as, this will be posted online, in addition to the other FAQs that are online as well. So why don't we start with sustainability and financial trends? I'll kick that off, this is an area of particular interest to me, as I know it is to my colleagues on the board, I know administration has provided a lot of detailed financial information, which again is available both in this packet and on the district website, we're going to be talking about the budget specifically at Agenda Item Number Five again, but I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the concerns around sustainability and financial trends. I know some of the issues associated with ensuring sustainability are clearly a longer-term conversation, and I anticipate the board is going to want to include those conversations on a more routine basis in our regular work agenda. Kind of in an ideal world, we'd be kind of matching a flat and a predictable dollar amount associated with per pupil spending with a completely flexible staff, where all educators, support staff, and administrators share the same set of transferable core skills and abilities and experience, and all students require exactly the same standard level of service. That unfortunately is not the world we live in, in education, but given that 80% of the budget is in wages and benefits, the longer-term discussion, in my opinion, really needs to include, along with enrollment, projections in talking about sustainability is really total compensation strategy and goals, including hiring, development, and retention strategies, our program offerings, and revisiting our program offerings, and most importantly, kind of how all of those come together to support student outcomes, and that may mean we need to recalibrate our ends policy to reflect changing desired outcomes. And as David reminded me earlier, that all needs to be balanced with minimum state requirements and additional mandates at the federal and state level that might be overlaid on top of an operating budget. So I think some great discussion was generated around future sustainability, I also feel that's a longer-term conversation that we really need to make part of the board's work agenda on a routine basis, and I'll turn it over to my board colleagues to add any additional comments.
So you can explain that most of the details are in here.
Yeah, well as Martin said, a lot of the details on specific questions are in the packets that were handed out, and again, these will be posted on the website. Any other comments on sustainability? Why don't I open it up briefly for any public questions or comments in this particular area? Yes, sir.
Is it sustainability in general, or sustainability of the school system?
Sustainability in general, or sustainability of the school system? Is that your question? I think it's both, in general, I think the board has looked at sustainability relative to the operating budget and future projections, so even things like looking at, I know we've attempted to do this in the past, but looking at a multi-year budgeting process, which is difficult to do when there are variables that we don't control, such as the yield rate at the state level, but those would factor in, as well as labor negotiations might be part of that, but again, generally speaking, it's what outcomes we want for our students, and kind of at a cost the community will support.
May I comment? I have a few things.
Sure, do we have a roving mic, by the way, so everybody can hear?
Thank you Greg.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm going to move me over here. Hello, is that good?
Can you identify yourself first?
Certainly.
Thanks.
My name is Morris Mahoney, I am a resident of South Burlington, and I was a teacher at the school for 32 years, I currently sub at the high school. Pretty regular. I do that because I love the system and I love the kids. I think it's time on any budget considerations in future votes, to send an SOS out to the community of South Burlington. An SOS to support our schools. Recently, our schools have been attacked in a way I have not seen in nearly 40 years of involvement with one of the finest school systems in the state of Vermont. The South Burlington school system has always been the heart and soul of this community, and the schools are the reason that people move here, stay here, their children stay here, their grandchildren stay here. I'm not familiar completely with the Rebel Alliance, and I'm sure it's composed of some very fine people who are sincere in their desire to maintain their own nicknames. And that's what it is, it's a little nickname. Unfortunately, the Rebel Alliance also contains some people who are very angry, and they don't care if they destroy a great school system. In the protest of a change of a nickname, they'll vent their anger at the superintendent, the board, the teachers, and with two recent tax votes, they're venting their anger at the students at South Burlington. It's time to get real, it's time to get back to what is important. Does anyone really think that a nickname is more important than the well-being of our school system? Their anger at the board has blinded some people to the consequences. In the recent disruption at the school, the lockdown at the high school, the very day that those students were in there, locked in for four hours with their teachers, there were six teachers who that morning had received a reduction in force, and they carried on. Keeping a nickname with an historically racist connection is a problem, but what is the point of keeping the nickname and losing the sports, the activities, the advisors, the coaches, because we're angry about the change of a nickname? I'm not happy with the school board on a couple of items either. I think the school board could have done a much, much better job on both votes of explaining what local schools are facing these days. It would be helpful for the school board to let people know about more than 200 non-funded mandates from the state and the federal government in the last 20 years, over 200, and you have to do that, we have to pay for it. It would be helpful for the school board if they could tell people about the tax sensitivity, income sensitivity of property taxes in the state of Vermont. Unless you're making over $140,000, in all likelihood, you'll be getting a tax rebate. It's important that you tell the people about all of the extra student services which we must provide to students, and I don't begrudge any of them. We have some very fine people working with some very, very challenging kids.
Can I ask you to kind of wrap up your comments here?
That's what I'm doing. So I think the South Burlington schools, over the years, have done a lot, I know, for thousands of young people, and we should support that effort completely for the future. It's time to move on. I don't care if South Burlington athletic teams are called the chipmunks, I do care if we don't have athletic teams, if we don't have the extra activities, if we don't have the special needs people that are so vital to including everyone.
Okay, we're going to have to wrap it up. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to shift to, unless there's any other questions or concerns on sustainability, and yes, Jerry? Oh, can we get a mic over to you, please, sorry?
I would encourage the board to remember a lot of your. Budget is dependent upon external funds, that is not funds just coming from South Burlington. The gentleman mentioned income sensitivity, it's true that about 80% of people in the state benefit from income sensitivity, but that means the state of Vermont is kicking in money into the educational program here. You're also dependent about $2.3 million from students outside of South Burlington. Being dependent upon the state is somewhat problematic, because the state of Vermont is dependent upon the federal government for 35% of its budget, and the federal government right now is $20 trillion in debt, and according to the CBO, the next 10 years is going to add another $10 trillion of debt. If you look at how the government spends its money, about 63% is mandatory programs like Medicare, Social Security, et cetera, 7 or 8% is interest on the debt, and another 15% is the military, so after you exclude all the mandatory spending programs, interest on the debt, and the military, you have about 15% of the budget left over. That includes everything else that the government does. So at some point, it's possible the government is going to say, we just don't have enough to do everything for everybody, and they'll tell states like Vermont, which is dependent upon 35% of its budget, that we can't continue to give you 35% of your budget, and if the government says that to Vermont, Vermont's going to say to communities, we can't continue to give you all this money, because the government is not giving us the money. So I want the board, when it continues to look at sustainability, to realize how dependent you are on external sources of funding, it's not just the community of South Burlington which is paying all the taxes, it's a very complex economic puzzle, and to be unaware of it is dangerous.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, we're going to move on to the second topic of labor negotiations, and I'll ask perhaps one of my board colleagues to, oh, I'm sorry, sir?
Can you hear me, my name's Dave Wagner, I'm a South Burlington resident, I've been here since, I think about 2007, and I have, I've never seen a gathering like this before, constantly, for several reasons, but I want to ask the board, this is my question, why are we here today? That's a question I'd like to know from the board, why are we here today?
Well, we have a regularly scheduled meeting, that's why we're here.
No, no, I'm not talking about you, I know why you're here, but why are we here? Why are all these people here at your meeting? Why are we here?
I'm not sure if that's a rhetorical question, I assume you're interested in the topics on our agenda.
Some people want to support the school and the agenda, some people want to support a process to be heard, some people want to support a morphous, irresponsible budget. Are you getting that?
I think we're responding to that right now, sir.
Well, no, you're seeing a lot of people show up here, week after week, that aren't getting answers, and they're not seeing anything change, and we're seeing denials in the budget. So I ask, you know, why are we here? People have interests here, a lot of different interests, some of them have been here for 30 something years, and I praise your retirement, Mr. Mahoney, for teaching every one of these kids for 30 something years, but I'm sure in those 30 years, you've never seen one incidence of racism that hasn't been adequately handled and taken care of, and you support the Rebel idea, and the heritage and excitement that goes along with that in the schools for that long too, that's okay, it's my time, you have your time.
This is, also, please address the board, right?
I just want to know, based on his comment, based on what he said, do you really know why everybody is here today, majority of everybody that's here, and are you going to do it?
Thank you for coming.
Sure. I think Elizabeth was going to turn to me and some of her colleagues to talk about the next sort of section of questions that we received the night that we worked with the whiteboards, and that was labor negotiations, and there were several questions generated, such as, what is the whole board versus the public, and teacher negotiations, what impact voters have of the negotiations, those types of questions. I wanted to just start by saying where we are in negotiations, we declared impasse with the teachers several weeks ago, mediation, which is the next step in the process, to sort of receive outside help in trying to reach an agreement with the teachers, is now scheduled for Monday, and should we not come to an agreement during mediation, the next step in that process is fact-finding, where a neutral party comes in, and both sides give testimony on their positions, the fact-finder goes away and writes a report, they have 30 to 45 days to do that, they come back with the report, and it's non-binding, but the parties are to use that report in their ongoing negotiations to hopefully come to a settlement. This is a process that plays out, not just in South Burlington, but that plays out across the state, it is the process by which we've negotiated several contracts with teachers in the past, and we are, we're, I don't think any of us are surprised to be where we are in that process, so I've heard it characterized as us fumbling along, but we kind of understand the process and we're working through it the best that we can, and that sort of goes to the role of the board versus the public in the negotiations, and the board is very well-supported as we go through this process, we have lawyers, we have consultants to help us through this process, we have very experienced board members who have been through this process several times before, we do want to hear from the community, unfortunately, we cannot share every single strategy or every single number that we are thinking in those negotiations, it would put us at a significant disadvantage in negotiations, and so we urge your patience and ask for your continued support as we work through this very important process. Another item that's really come up is what is the impact of the budget, of the negotiations on the budget, and aren't the two things tied together? Of course, teachers and support staff and our people make up 80% of our budget, so of course, the outcome of these negotiations has an impact on future budgets, the timing of when budgets need to be passed for us to plan for the next school year doesn't always line up with when contracts expire and when the process of negotiations plays out, so we do the best that we can to make a budget based on what we hope will be the outcome of those negotiations, we hope to do better than what we put in the budget, and roll any savings into the next budgeted year. Voting no on a budget, because you're frustrated with what the teachers have asked for, simply slows down our ability to really respond to what's happening in negotiations, because then we're taking time working on the next budget, as opposed to really putting our efforts into negotiating with the teachers and all of the work that has to go into those negotiations, and voting no on a budget doesn't automatically tell the teachers, this is all that the community will support, and therefore you just have to accept it, negotiations will likely continue to play out in the way they have in the past, and it will be down to the board, if we can't negotiate within the budget, we'll have to make cuts, as we've discussed before, so voting no on the budget doesn't really help us in the negotiating process, and in fact, can sort of harm us as it takes away time from the administration and all of us, as we're trying to work through those processes, and we have two of those processes going on right now, so we have the teachers, and we have the support staff, both contracts expire on June 30th. So that is sort of my little piece on labor negotiations, I don't know if anyone, especially Elizabeth and Martin, who have been through this process more, if they have anything to add.
I think one of the newer developments is there was a ruling by the Labor Board about conducting negotiations in public, and several districts and supervisor units around the state did make efforts to conduct labor negotiations in public, historically, that's gotten mixed reviews from colleagues on other school boards that I've talked with, but the most recent ruling, although it's not law, indicates that collective bargaining or negotiation sessions fall outside the open meeting law, I know, Martin, do you have the opinion of the Vermont School Boards Association on that labor ruling?
I know that they were before the Vermont Labor Relations Board, on the opposite side of what that question was, pushing for more transparency and the ability to have these meetings be open, so I don't know if there's been a position on whether they or the school board that is involved in that particular case is going to appeal this or not, I don't know if a decision's been made yet.
Yeah, I mean, kind of at first blush, those, the state's open meeting law and the Labor Board's ruling, recent ruling, do seem to be in conflict, so we're keeping an eye on how that plays out in the district or SU that had filed that unfair labor practice. Any other comments on the labor negotiations piece? I'll open it up for questions, Sheldon?
Yeah, a couple of questions, number one, who pays for the mediators, and how much do they cost? And two, with regard to the, whether the meetings or the negotiations are open to the public, I would propose that the board would just agree to open it up to the public, just for purposes of transparency, whether that's required or not, that's another question, but there's no doubt about it that you could agree to that, and therefore make it transparent to all of us. Either that, or maybe what we should go to, if you can't do that, or don't want to do that, maybe we should go to, maybe we should go to a vote on the teacher's contract, on an up or down on the teacher's contract, because I think that would be an appropriate response by the public if we can't see what's going on in these negotiations.
I think I can address some of those, the first one is, if a mediator is used, typically both parties agree to that, and that cost is split between the two parties. On, I think the issue of the open meeting is what we just had talked about, which is right now, based on that Labor Board ruling, there would be an unfair labor practice filed against the district if we were to insist on conducting negotiations in an open session, and to your last point, the board is charged with negotiating labor contracts, and relative to, and employees are covered under collective bargaining law, so certainly have rights from that standpoint, so the notion of a vote, unless it's under the context of the entire budget inclusive of total compensation, is counter to that current practice in law right now.
Okay, I would just respond to that, then you're just, you're giving us no alternative except for the budget.
Well, I think one thing we've heard for sure is we can share, as soon as we're in a position to be able to share information about what the board's proposal is, and some details around the areas that we focused on, I think there has been another paper article published around the board's proposal, and without going into a lot of detail, the focus is on obviously wages, healthcare benefits, the workday, and then the salary schedule, and starting to develop some changes to that, so I think those are the main focal areas. Martin, correct me if I'm wrong on any of those.
No, that's correct.
Yes, questions? Yes, sir, in the back.
Can you guys tell me how many people, how many teachers in the district make the maximum salary cap? I think it's $90,000, and how many people are receiving a salary of $90,000 per?
I believe that the top is like 87, nine, close to 90, but not quite there, and I think there's about 79 teachers at that level.
When you add in the benefits, and also your retirement package, and also the healthcare costs, have you figured out roughly what is the cost per top pay scale of each teacher that you hire?
Yeah, well, the total benefits inclusive of healthcare add about 20% to compensation, and although the pension, the retirement pension is not funded at the local level, the accrual is, I think I looked at those numbers fairly recently, it's maybe $20,000 a year accrued for that pension benefit.
My grandfather, my aunts and uncles, my cousins, are all public school teachers at Vermont. And nobody's going to question the dedication that it takes to be a public school teacher, but if the costs of 70 of your teachers is potentially over $100,000 a year, and you're asking for cuts to programs, why don't you in the negotiations ask for an elimination of the seniority clause, and actually ask people either to give back their money, give back some of their salary, so that they can hire younger teachers who can make up for the programs that you guys want to cut? You know, we've had a teacher's contract which has, now it's better off, you're better off being a teacher than you are an average worker in South Burlington, you get paid more, you've got better medical care, and many of us just don't see how that's sustainable over the long term. So when you're negotiating with the union, let them know that many of us know what's up, know the costs, and we really need them to sacrifice to keep these schools, which are spectacular, my kids have attended, okay, we need to keep these schools excellent and improved, thank you.
Wendell Coleman, I'm a Fairleigh U resident of South Burlington, moved here a year ago in November, have 23 years, I believe it is, experience on school boards, several of those years were chief. Several of those years were chief negotiator against the NEA and I would just like to tell from much smaller communities. I come from rural Vermont and that shaped some of my opinion. But when anyone suggests simply demanding something in negotiations and we've heard a possibility of we're going to cap salaries and possibly hire cheaper people, remember, these negotiations take place under state law and I was a hardcore negotiator but I knew I always had to keep my community behind me. Is South Burlington ready to weather a significant teacher strike to get what I have heard asked here? Because if you're not, I respectfully suggest that you don't ask. If you're really ready to do that, that's another story.
Thank you. Mark, right over here. Yes.
I've lived here for over fifteen years and I think we should value people who have been in the profession a long time. They come, they develop experience and strategies and qualities that, you know, you don't get in brand new person. Why would we want to just get rid of people with experience? You know, you don't go to a locker room, you get rid of apartments and hire all first-years, you know?
Can I answer? Can I push back?
We're addressing the board.
We should value the wonderful teachers that we have in this community and appreciate them instead of putting them out to pasture like little cows, you know? They have wonderful qualities, experience.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. I have a comment.
Yes.
Somebody asked why we're here tonight and the reason I'm here is to celebrate, I'm sorry, consider although I am a resident, a parent of three children at our schools, I'm honored to be a teacher at South Burlington High School. And I'm here to celebrate tonight what I believe is great in our community and that is our schools. Our schools are South Burlington's greatest strength and something which has traditionally united our community. It used to be one thing everyone agreed on. My hope is that it will someday be that way again soon. Going to work each day at the high school is a true joy. It's an oasis of calm and efficiency and student-centered positivity. It is a refuge from the toxic national and local political climate these days. Kids are learning and supporting each other in ways we do not see in our broader society and I'm very grateful for that. I've worked in other schools in a district in Vermont similar in size to South Burlington and I can honestly say that we get a huge reward for every penny we spend. My experience elsewhere was one of chaos, lack of leadership, and lesser outcomes. South Burlington has wonderful dedicated teachers, educators, and leaders and we attract only the best from all over the state and the region. We're competitive in every aspect of the word. Our students at least at South Burlington High School continue to thrive with the same school spirit as always regardless of its name. It is the spirit of all that is good in our community and all that reminds us of the best things in life. Youth, vitality, a sense of individuality and freedom that we see our children enjoying that reminds us of the best days of our lives. The wonderful thing about working at a high school as a teacher is that I get to enjoy the spirit and vitality every day. I really wish all of you, everyone in this room, could too. We need to come together to support our students. We need to keep South Burlington the top of the list of the best schools in Vermont. I fear we're destroying the one thing that unites most of us, our schools. I want our administrators, superintendent, and Board to know that there are many people in the community who support them even in the face of vocal opposition. And I encourage our community to vote yes on the upcoming budget to support our current thriving schools and programs. The alternative is simply self-destructive. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other responses, we're going to move on to the third category, which is Board/District Leadership. I don't know if any Board members wanted to make specific comments here. I think there was quite a bit of information asked around our audit process and that's covered in the handout. Certainly some feedback on improving communication and outreach, which the Board and Superintendent are always looking to make improvements to. Some additional forms of communication that appear to be desirable by members of the community. And I think the couple of areas I know I wanted to cover, I think the community is aware that the Board has responsibility for evaluating the CEO of the district or superintendent and that process is ongoing. I also think we established some goals for the superintendent that one of those happens to be, along with the metrics around student outcomes, really looking at succession planning and leadership development and that continues to be a goal that the superintendent's performance will be evaluated against. In addition to that, we have a pretty strong rubric for all employees across the district for performance evaluation. We've upgraded our HR systems in terms of providing upgraded job descriptions and those are some of the areas that questions were asked about. Any additional comments from my Board colleagues there? All right, any questions or concerns from the public on Board/District Leadership? Okay, seeing none, I just encourage you to review the packet for specific responses there. And we're going to move on to the fourth and last category from the May third, Community Feedback, and that's the Rebel nickname. And I think, Martin, you were going to take a pass at kind of going through the timeline because that's an area that was brought up as a concern from the community?
Yes. I think you're good. Good, Greg?
Okay. Okay. Is that good? So, there have been a number of questions about the process and timeline that the administration and Board followed to arrive at the decision to retire the Rebels identifier. And I'm going to address these concerns and bear with me in the next ten or so minutes by reviewing the history of that process, you know, what the Board learned and the bases for its decision. The issue of the appropriateness of the Rebel identifier arose in July 2015 in a series of front porch forum posts and in August third, seven days article, although we have since learned that this particular issue has come up frequently or periodically since it was first in the early nineteen-sixties became the Rebel identifier for the school. In any event, the school board took up the issue at its August nineteenth, two thousand fifteen meeting, hearing from individuals who urged the Board to consider changing the nickname. As this past Sunday's Burlington Free Press article shows, as I mentioned, the controversy over the Rebels name and its trappings goes much further back, but I'll stick to the recent history. The Board sought public input at its next meeting on September second, attended by forty-eight community members, many of whom spoke, some in favor and some in opposition to the change in the name. The issue was before the Board again at its September sixteenth, two thousand fifteen meeting with fifty community members attending and at its October sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting with fifty-three community members attending. The Board received additional public input on the name at these meetings. During this period, the Board also received input, both pro and con, through the district's website and by email as well as in informal settings like the grocery store and gym. We heard from dozens of community members and alumni. At the October sixth meeting, the administration provided a memo to the Board outlining options related to the identifier. One option was to change the name. If that option was chosen, then the administration suggested steps that could be undertaken to adjust and clarify the intended meaning of Rebels and to make clear its non-affiliation with the Confederacy. Through this process, the Board and community learned about the origin of the Rebels name. The Board also learned from community members and from reporting by the Burlington Free Press that the school previously had a Confederate Rebels mascot and sang Dixie at sporting events. The Confederate flag was flown at sporting events and appeared in yearbooks. The following is a quote from a book, Through White Eyes: Color and Racism in Vermont, by Bob Walsh. "South Burlington High School adopted the nickname of Rebels when the school was established in the nineteen-sixties. Ostensibly, the name was selected because the South Burlington School had broken away from Burlington. Until the nineteen-eighties, the school's mascot, Captain Rebel, would lead the football team onto the field waving a Confederate flag with Dixie blared over loudspeakers. Well into the nineteen-nineties, Confederate flag decals adorned the school buses and a caricature of a Confederate soldier emblazoned athletic schedules." The following is from a note sent to the Board by a member of the graduating class of nineteen sixty-eight. "When I was in seventh or eighth grade in the year nineteen sixty-one or possibly nineteen sixty-two, the school administration provided for a vote from the student body to determine the Rebel nickname. The mood of the student body years ago, in my opinion, was rebellious and a bit cavalier as the nickname to be chosen. Being a community without racial diversity, the majority of students then, in my opinion, were not aware of the extended ramifications." The Board learned also that the use of Confederate imagery in the district as well as the Dixie plane of Dixie and such was banned about twenty years ago. The Board also heard from many individuals who understood and believed that the Rebels' name had taken on new, more positive connotations. They did not believe that the name continued to carry a connection to the Confederacy and no longer had racist overtones. Rather, they understood that the name related to individuals who stand up for what one believes. Despite these positive connotations and the attempt to scrub the name of its connections to the Confederacy, some students were still offended and uncomfortable with the name. The Board heard from students who had negative experiences with the name. For example, the following from a graduate from, I think, two thousand and eleven, I believe. "As a person of color that went through this high school system, I'm all for the name change. The students and community don't seem to understand the effort of this name on the school's reputation and mission. Just because they are not offended by the name doesn't mean it shouldn't change. In fact, changing it is a great act of openness and moving forward as an institution that combats racism in all its forms. I experienced racism in South Burlington High School and so did my sisters. The scars of that experience haven't healed for me yet. This is a great chance for our community to dig a little deeper on what's it mean to be white or a person of color in a place like South Burlington." The Board also received input that the district should seek to rebrand the Rebels identifier to emphasize its positive connotations rather than eliminating it. At an October twenty-first, two thousand fifteen Board meeting, the Board members decided against changing the Rebels name at that time. But the Board made clear that the discussion was not over and that the administration was going to have to work to ensure the name could continue to be appropriate for the district. In my statement at that meeting, for example, I said the following. "The question for me is whether we are able to separate the Rebels name from its negative connotations now that we have had this community discussion. I'm not sure that we can, but I'm willing to allow the administration the opportunity to try to do so by implementing the various recommendations that they have put forth. I would not change the name at this time. Instead, I would direct the administration to consider the recommendations that they have made and to implement those that are necessary to clearly define what we mean by Rebels. If we are unable to do that, then we should revisit the issue and decide whether a name change is the only course to follow." Other Board members understood that the administration would be required to report on its efforts related to addressing concerns brought forward related to the name. The Board directed the Superintendent to discuss with administrators the idea of a steering committee to continue reinforcing an inclusive school community. Now, let me again be clear, the Board did not decide to keep the name case closed in October two thousand fifteen. It decided to give it another chance and gather more information through the administration. At the November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen School Board meeting, the Superintendent set forth next steps related to the Rebel name. He acknowledged that the administration was never under the impression that the issue would be put to rest by the Board's formal action and has instructed our beginning conversations with our current students and staff about moving forward. In early two thousand sixteen, SBH students were increasingly finding their voice regarding their opinions that the continued use of the nickname was offensive to some and no longer appropriate for all. Awareness of these students' concerns among faculty and some of their peers made rallying around the Rebel identifier problematic. By spring, it had become clear that the rebranding charge that was initially accepted by the administration as thoughtful and reasonable had become increasingly untenable. It was becoming apparent that the Rebels identifier was divisive, not unifying. This was validated by the high school principal in a qualitative survey gauging students and staff level of comfort and concern with the nickname. The Board became involved again this past fall. At the October fifth, two thousand sixteen meeting, as the agenda noted, the Superintendent provided an update on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The Superintendent reviewed various activities in the school related to the district's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It explained the activities of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, including educational opportunities. The minutes from that meeting reflect that Mr. Lalonde asked for a progress report on the actions planned when the decision was made to keep the Rebel name. At the October tenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, the agenda contained the following item, progress report, actions planned when decision was made to keep the Rebels name. The Superintendent reviewed the steps that had been outlined the prior November and in the minutes, it reflected, again, Lalonde said not seeing the symbolism of the Rebel name addressed and would like to see it addressed. In addition to the agendas and the minutes, the community was informed that the Rebels name was again before the Board through articles in the other paper. An October thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, the other paper article on diversity, equity, and inclusion had the following. "Martin Lalonde also reflected upon last year's conversation regarding the Rebel name and noted that a list of action steps were created at the time as the district moved forward. He requested an update on the status of those steps." I mention these items because there is, this was not being done under the Board. It was being reported on and it was in our minutes and in our agenda. October seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, other paper article on the Board meeting explained that Young provided the Board with the status of actions that were planned when the debate over the Rebel name took place last year. What has occurred since the initial set of recommendations were created is a deeper dive into issues related to equity, school climate, racism, respectful dialogue, hiring, and professional development, including the formation of the SBHS Student Diversity Union. At the November second, two thousand sixteen meeting, the agenda contained the following item, progress report, actions planned when decision was made to keep the Rebel name. And in the minutes, it reflected that a Board member, me, would like clarification that there will be some commitment that the rebranding of the Rebel name will be looked at with help from the leadership at the high school. Mr. Young stands committed to the conversation. Mr. Hines noted that the Rebel name was not the main focus of the group and would like to see more come from the high school. Mr. Young wants to be clear the specific recommended actions have not yet happened and so that is just showing that we were having these conversations. Soon after, on November seventh, two thousand sixteen, the following article appeared in the Burlington Free Press, "South Burlington Students Push School to Redefine Rebel Name." At the December seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting, the agenda contained the following item, update on diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Superintendent's report on this item focused on the work in the school district connected to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This, of course, is a broader topic than the Rebels identifier but served as a crucial foundation for understanding the issue associated with the identifier. As the Superintendent's report concluded, "As a result of work outlined above and the emphasis on building a strong foundation of learning and understanding and an examination of our personal experiences and biases, we believe we will be well positioned for informed --" dialogue on a wide variety of topics, including but not limited to the Rebels' identifier." And in the minutes, Ms. Fitzgerald states that Ms. Fitzgerald would like to see the action steps from the Rebels' identifier discussion reconciled. Mr. Jim Letty provided a letter for the board and spoke about the Rebels' identifier and the need for the board to listen to the students. I'm getting close. We're up to January. January 18th, 2017, board meeting, the agenda included the superintendent's report on the Rebels' identifier. Sixty community members attended the session, many commenting on the Rebels' identifier. At the meeting, as reflected in the minutes, the superintendent discussed training for staff related to diversity and inclusion, the continued work of the SBSD Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and the continued work of students, including the Student Diversity Union. A superintendent's report noted the following. "Our world has changed since 2015, and we now recognize that defining what it means to be a South Burlington Rebel is too narrow in scope, has the potential to exclude students rather than include them, and does not allow us to best address underlying issues impacting the well-being of all our students, staff, and family." The community was further informed of a pending decision on the Rebels' identifier in a January 26th, 2017, other paper article, Young to Offer Recommendation on Rebels' Identifier. In the February 1st, 2017, agenda, the community was put on notice that a decision would be made on the Rebels' identifier. Approximately 150 individuals attended this meeting. At the meeting, Superintendent Young recommended that the district no longer use the Rebels' identifier. As he noted, "This recommendation has not been made quickly, nor has it been made lightly." He said, "What has guided my decision today is that I want all students to feel safe and included in our schools and in our South Burlington community. It has become crystal clear to me that the current Rebels' identifier is interfering with all students' ability to feel safe and included in our schools." Of significant importance to the recommendation was the training and learning that the district employees have been doing as a staff around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Principal Burke also offered a statement at the meeting, read by then-acting Principal Patrick Phillips, and I believe despite this has taken a while, that this statement bears And this is from Patrick Burke. "This issue has been challenging, and I think our community needed this process to play out as it has. If cultural competency and cultural humility offer reasonable lenses for viewing this issue and if they reflect points on a continuum, then I believe we needed to move through those points to arrive where we are. Last fall, all five board members read through thoughtful statements when voting in favor of keeping the name and tasked us with further clarification of the name. This change was made with the best of intentions. The process and discussion last year was complicated, and to be fair to the board, some of the most salient points in opposition to the name were made after the board's decision was announced. When the issue was discussed in and out of school, a number of students and staff remained hesitant to share their opinions. That dynamic remains. Students and staff on all sides of this issue continue to feel uncomfortable expressing their views. That fact alone is a major reason I support Mr. Young as he asks the board to embrace a new direction. I expect there will be discussion as his recommendation unfolds. I think it's important to seek a solution without winners or losers. For me, the fact that there is a degree of disunity about a symbol that exists expressly to unify our school is enough to inspire us to do better. Is the Rebels' name inherently racist or bad? In my opinion, it's not. Countless examples of Rebels' exist in our culture that are positive, but because we cannot escape the unfortunate historical Confederate context, going forward, it's no longer a symbol, the SBHS of today can 100% rally around. We need to change, not because one side has won the argument. We need to change because an argument about something that exists to unify us continues to divide us. We can do better. At one time, I admit, it was easier for me to look beyond the most unfortunate connotations of Rebels', but now I cannot look students and staff who are uncomfortable with the name in the eye and say, "Too bad." I can, however, work with those who love the name and make sure we honor the good they genuinely feel about being a South Burlington Rebel. When former students say, "Once a Rebel, always a Rebel," they are sharing their experience with the name. For a long time, the Rebels' name was successful at unifying the community around the school we love, even though it's no longer as powerful as it once was. I understand the views of those who are expressing frustration with their prospect of a change." So, the board unanimously agreed with the administration's recommendation. Four board members at the time had participated throughout the entire 18-month process, and the fifth member had been engaged in discussions since the election almost one year earlier. I want to reiterate one point related to rebranding. It became clear to the administration that rebranding simply was not going to solve the issue. Patrick Burke explained this in his statement that I read, that was read for him on February 1st, and addressed it again at a board meeting earlier this month, or perhaps it was last month. The name had become too much of a flashpoint. So, in closing, this is a forward-looking decision that focuses on our current and future students. It focuses on what is happening within the walls of our schools, on our athletic fields, and at other co-curricular events. It should not diminish alumni's attachment to the Rebels' identifier. They can always be Rebels. They can have Rebels' reunions. They will continue to have their trophies displayed in the schools identified with the Rebels'. But the district is retiring the Rebels' nickname for the current and future students. They will have a new identifier to rally around. This is a nod to the future, not an indictment of the past.
Other comments from board members on concerns that were raised around the Rebels' I know one that I personally have heard was the timing of board elections. And I know there was some concern that the action item that the board had addressed occurred after the date that people interested in a board seat might have applied or had submitted petitions to the city for those seats. And I don't really have a response for that, other than the calendar that Martin went through was really reflective of the work the board was doing at the time, and there wasn't any specific date chosen for action relative to any election or any petition dates or anything like that, other than that. Anything else? All right, we'll open it up for a few comments from the public or questions. The gentleman in the back, Mark?
Hi, my name is Mike Raji, president since 1978, and not really here to debate the process or really even the Rebels' name, but to share our experience that my 7th grader had today, we talked about surveys, we talked about acceptance. And I think at this board, and I'm sure any board I serve, the board, first of all, I would say my experience and my daughter's experience have been phenomenal at Orchard School and also here at Penn. However, with that said, today, she got in the car, and I asked her, I said, "Have you answered any questions or survey regarding the Rebels' name?" And she said, "Yeah, we had it, and I had to answer it." I said, "Oh." I said, "What did you answer?" And I said, "Well, I didn't really want to answer." I said, "Well, why didn't you want to answer it?" She goes, "Well, I wanted to put down Rebels', but there was no place to do it." And I said, "Well, okay. Why didn't you just not answer the survey?" And this is why I'm here today. And she said, and I quote, "I was told I had to participate." And that just struck me as like, okay, that's not exactly the way this should go through, be it Rebels', be it whatever Mr. Mahoney said.
Chipmunks.
I mean, I don't really care, as long as it's a process and the public has the input. But I felt, in a way, that there is a 7th grader being, I don't want to use this strong word, but the lack of coerced answer a survey. And that just doesn't sit well to me.
Thank you.[1191.42][1191.42][applause] Diane?
So, I'm actually reading a statement on behalf of my son, who is working, so he asked if I could read this. "As a senior at SBHS, I have always loved this community. People have always wanted to move here for many reasons, but especially for the quality of our schools. However, I'm very disappointed in many members of our community for smearing and demonizing people who want to change the Rebels' name to be more inclusive. All students must feel welcomed. To the adults in our community, I understand some of you are frustrated and strongly disagree with the name change, but at some point, you must realize this has gone too far. I'm very worried about the future of SB. People won't want to move here anymore if we continue to vote down the budget. I am sick and tired of the lack of maturity from the many adults," end quote, "in our community. When will you understand that this is about the students of today, not your past, your needs? Support students in moving forward, as we are trying to do. Put your energy elsewhere. I would like to see my community united, not stuck in the negative. I am exhausted by the conflict that you are choosing to keep alive. I think other students are, too. Peace." And that was my son, Oliver Buckby.[1283.08][1283.08][applause]
Yeah, Sarah?
Can you tell me, were you guys ever threatened the legal action if you chose not to change the nickname?
Not to my knowledge. Jerry?
I'll be quick.
I don't want to scare you.
I'm not at all disappointed with the discussion. This is what democracy is all about. People have different opinions as to what's right and what's wrong. And when that happens in a community, what you have to do is address the issue. You have to try to find some common grounds, some type of closure. So, for the student who feels, you know, he's tired up and he's exhausted about it, that's what democracy is, you know? Getting into that town meeting, having people express their opinions, whether you agree with it or not, listen to what people say, and then you try to come to a conclusion. I'm not wedged to the Rebels' name or any other name. My concern is the process, to make sure. You want to be inclusive, you want all your students to feel includedated. But as I look at the process, I think a lot of people were left out of the process. In your desire to have all students feel welcome in the school, some people got marginalized, and that sort of makes me uncomfortable. But I'm not appalled at all by the disagreements and the concerns that people have. That's what democracy is all about, trying to find a common ground.
Thank you.[1363.83][1363.83][applause] Melvin?
I was kind of surprised, this is on, I was kind of surprised by Mr. Lalonde's comments and his reliance on the Burlington Free Press. With all due respect to the Free Press and to any of the press here, for one thing, many of those who read that article saw no balance in it at all. Here's what Thomas Jefferson had to say about newspapers. Quote, "The man who reads nothing at all is better educated than the man who reads nothing but newspapers." And I would suggest, in this case, that is true. Last week, you hurried in and then hustled out, your lawyer, who we pay for, didn't get to ask any questions, and he gave you the advice that you wanted to hear, he knew you wanted to hear, you knew that he knew he wanted to hear, and so on and so forth. I can guarantee you that his view of the law was not completely, or that was completely one-sided. So, I hope that you're not going to rely on it. Last week, after the meeting, I stepped out in the hall, and I was talking to some people, and I was accosted by a woman I had never met before. She didn't come up to me and introduce herself. She just got into my face and said that I had just committed a microaggression. Here is what Professor Thomas Sowell, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with him, and I'll tell you a little bit more about him in a moment, but here's what he said about microaggressions. Quote, "The concept of microaggression is just one of many tactics used to stifle differences of opinion by declaring some opinions to be hate speech. Instead of debating those differences in the marketplace of ideas, to accuse people of aggression for not marching in lockstep with political correctness is to set the stage for justifying real aggression against them." And, you know, I think that there are people who want to see the name stay the same, who do actually feel threatened by violence against them. And certainly, well, I didn't feel threatened by this woman getting in my face. If she went any further, then yes, I could have felt threatened. Want to read you a little bit more about something Thomas Sowell said about an issue, about a similar issue. First, I want to tell you a little bit about him. He's probably one of the--
Watch the time frame, please.
He just took about 20 minutes.
He's a word maker.
Yeah, I know, that's okay. I think you need to listen and learn. Tom Sowell--
Order!
Not necessary.
Knock it out, can you quiet down? It's--
Quiet down, please.
Tom Sowell is one of the most prominent social scientists of the late 20th and early 21st century. He was born in 1930 in North Carolina, grew up in Harlem, New York. His father died shortly after he was born. His mother was a housemaid. Professor Sowell wrote that his childhood encounters with white people were so limited that he did not know that blond was a hair color. He dropped out of high school, served in the Marine Corps, and then somehow managed to graduate magna cum laude from Harvard, received a master's degree from Columbia University, and a doctorate from the University of Chicago. Taught at Howard University, Rutgers, Cornell, Brandeis, Amherst, and UCLA. He's authored more than 40 books, including many on race in the U.S. and around the world. So, this article that I want to read from dates back to--
7000. 30 seconds of--
No, I don't have--
Yes, you do.
Okay, so this article I want to read from dates back to 2000, and it's about the, well, the headline is the Rebels' flag, but obviously, it's the Confederate flag. Here's what Dr. Sowell had to say. "Personally, as a black man, I'm not thrilled at the sight of Confederate flag. On the other hand, I'm not thrilled at the sight of professional wrestling, or Ellen Aldo, but I don't demand that they be banned. Any association of human beings from marriage to a nation involves putting up with things we would rather not be bothered with. Only children insist that everything must be done their way. If the current campaign to get rid of the Confederate flag off the state capitol in South Carolina were just an isolated controversy, it might not mean much. But it is part of a much bigger trend of constantly scavenging for grievances. There was time--
We really have to cut you off, Mr. Sowell.
There was time--
Thank you, sir.
--when there is real, a very big reason, it's back for all of that.
Would the board like to take a brief break?
Ask yourself, who did you want personally to have benefited from being a chip--
We're going to call a five-minute recess?
Chances are--
Thank you.
Yes, sir? Yes, could you identify yourself, please? Thanks.
Dan Albrecht, student of high school. Appreciate Mr. Lalonde's summary. Again, I spoke of the last meeting, a little bit about process, and compared the process of the school consolidation discussion with the process, or maybe the lack thereof, albeit a legal process? Board meetings worked by duly hired officials, et cetera, whereas the school consolidation discussion was highly public, highly involved, a large committee comprised of the usual suspects, the professionals, the consultants-- committee comprised of the usual suspects, the professionals, the consultants, all that stuff that good public policy makes expensive and messy, but reaches a reasonable community consensus. And when I hear the summary, you know, it seemed to start off with the best of intentions in the fall of 2015. I see a reference to, in early 2016, there was awareness that there was a problem. Mr. Burke did a, quote, qualitative survey. There, and then various, you know, things were out there. Mr. LaLonde, to his credit, repeatedly asking for progress reports on diversity and inclusion. References to staff and administrators and trainings and diversity and exclusion, maybe for them, but the community didn't seem to be aware of that, nor invited to a dialogue, nor invited to participate in a rebranding process, whatever that may have led to. So again, I'll read it. I don't care about the Rebel... I'm not from here, you know? Bethesda, Maryland, Walt Whitman High School Viking. Don't tell me how you get a Viking and a poet together, but there it is. And so...
We could go to Walt Whitman.
It's... As I referenced the last time, this is the fruit of that lack of process. And as someone who works in public policy, anytime you leave the public out, you're going to pay the piper, whatever it is. School consolidation, I mean, you saw the rage on that one. Close my school? Mother of God, we bought in this neighborhood. Great kids walk to school. What is this outside... Well, you know, so be it. It took the time. Even though there were hard forces pushing behind that one, got a sale now, got to develop. On the other hand, oh, the schools are falling down, we need to consolidate her. This consultant says something great, this is what we all need. The professionals saying, we need this consolidated big school to save time for teachers traveling from three elementary schools. So again, I bring it back to that process. And what's frustrating to me is despite the fact that the board has all the power and the administration has all the power, there's no sense of humility, no sense of maybe we could have done something a little different. There's a recantation of what happened, a postmortem, if you will, but not much else. And so I don't know how to get us out of this and all, but whether it was... I mean, if this doesn't teach us how to do things better, whether it's this issue or the number of others, we're never going to get out of this hole and stuff.
Thank you. The front row, please.
My name is Claudia Berger. I'm a South Burlington resident. I think a way out of this, to add on to what you are saying, is to actually put this up to a vote in the community, and I would say a binding vote, that that is a way to get past all the bad process that's happened before. I heard from this review, okay, we're going to change the name, and then the division is going to go away, and we're all going to unite. That's not going to happen. If the name gets changed the way that you want it changing, the burden of division is going to continue. I think actually put this to a vote of the community, a binding vote, will actually allow this issue to be put to rest either way, and the community to then move forward. People may not get what they want, but at least on both sides, they will feel like they have had a say. So I urge you to put this to... I know you've worked hard, but it's too important. I urge you to, again, put this issue to a binding vote, and I think we will get the healing that we need.
Can you identify yourself?
My name is Alicia Pierre. Again, I'll keep it brief. I've said this before, the thought of putting to a vote an issue which affects people of color in our community, where most of the community is white, just does not sit well with me. That makes me very uncomfortable.
Can you explain why?
Sorry.
Why? Because the majority of white people have never had to think about racism, have never experienced racism, and now we're asking...
Excuse me?
It's, you know, if I want to know about how racism is affecting somebody, I'm not going to ask a bunch of white people. I'm just not.
Thank you.
Brian Malloy from, obviously, a resident of South Burlington, a graduate of South Burlington. I'm not going to spend a lot of time in that, where everybody's talking about the Rebel moniker, the issue like that. Like the lady said, you want to settle this, put it to vote. It's going to take care of all your problems. But I think like that gentleman said, there's not enough humility in that desk to be willing to accept if you lose. Now, change gears. You want to talk about diversity? You want to talk about inclusionism? I would like to ask you upfront, if Mr. Burke was here, I'd ask him as well. How was the blackout day last fall considered inclusionary? How? You're discriminating against those same police officers who were standing out in front of that school protecting those students. How is that inclusionary?
Okay, we're not responding to specific questions, but thank you for the comment, Brian. Jerry?
I forgot I wanted to have something. And that is something Churchill said. He said, "Democracy is the worst form of government, except for all others which have been tried and failed. So don't be disheartened by this discussion."
Thank you. A gentleman in the back, Mark? Go ahead.
I didn't get involved in...
Mr. Skip, correct?
Yes, Mr. Skip. I didn't get involved in this because I was particularly interested in the Rebel name change, to be perfectly blunt. I got in this because of the idea of the rule of law in democracy. And you do not bring together people from other races, religions, creeds, and ethnicities by acting in secret, not having difficult conversations, and not putting things to a vote and believing in democratic principles. I've lived here most of my life, but I've lived overseas also. My kids are multiracial. My family is multiracial. Different people experience different forms of racism in different ways. But I believe in the goodness of this community, and I think if we were to put this to a vote, we would be able to have the difficult conversations around race. We haven't even discussed anything about the class differences and the poverty in our community. We ignore that. So wouldn't it be a great idea if you guys actually engaged in a rigorous public debate and defended the idea rather than imposing your will on the community? Because if you try to do that, all you're going to do is perpetuate all the stereotypes and all the power politics that goes along with this discussion. And many of us who, I mean, I've told members of the Rebel Alliance, I don't care about the name. What I care about is the fact that a petition, lawfully created, was submitted, and that other members of the community decided to bully people into withdrawing their names. That's not democracy. And so I'd ask, I guess it's a question, maybe you're going to deal with it a little bit later on the agenda, are you or are you not going to allow a vote, binding or otherwise, on the Rebel name question?
Thank you.
My name is David Bolger. I have two kids who have gone through and are going through South Burlington right now, and I just love this school. I love this school so much, and all the teachers here, and I can name so many teachers that have just blown me away. We came up from Mordtown after the flood in 2012, and we found a home here in the town subsector, and people of South Burlington are new neighbors, and since then with this just amazing school. And I feel that, boy, there's so much here that we are all feeling and talking about. And I feel a respect for people who are unlimited incomes. I feel a respect for people who are stuck paying mortgages and they can barely afford it in these tough times. I feel so much respect for everyone who is struggling and trying so much to...
Can you address the board, sir?
To do what you can, yes. To do what we can to keep the budgets down. As far... I am really strongly against putting this to a vote to the community, because I already voted. I already voted when I voted for you. It's your job to make these decisions. It's your job, and I want you to make that decision. So whatever your decision is, whatever your decision might have been, I absolutely support that, and I strongly disagree with the proposal that this go to a big... That this go back out to the community for a big vote. It's not necessary. We've all voted. We already voted for you. It's your job. Please do your job as you're doing it, and I thank you for doing your job.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jim Shields. Thanks for... Thanks, Martin, for the detail explanation. I just want to echo what David just said, and I'm just going to take it one step further, that if you went out for a vote and made a binding vote, which actually isn't really a thing, because it's still your decision, so you can't... You can have a recommendation through a vote. If you did that, you would be actually advocating your responsibility to make this decision. If you think something is inappropriate, and I'm hearing you say that you believe this nickname is an inappropriate symbol for our public institution, if you go out for a vote and shrug your shoulders and say, well, you know, it's inappropriate, but the community told us to do it, 51% wanted it, that would be an avocation of your moral responsibility as educational leaders and leaders of our public institution. So I'm encouraging you not to take that route. There's certainly ways to get input. A vote could be straw poll, things like that, but I don't think it's the way to go about it, because ultimately, it's the educational administrators and board's decision to do the right thing where they feel it's educationally valid.
Thank you. Right over here. I see your hand way in the back. I'll call you next.
I'm Joanne Haidkamp, 21 years in South Burlington, and son who graduated from South Burlington High School, which served him very well. I also don't really see a reason for there to be a public vote, and I've heard comment that it be a way to mitigate what was a flawed process. But especially after just hearing the description of the process that happened. In October 2015, after lots of discussion, the school board voted to, at that time, keep the Rebel nickname. And what happened? As far as I know, looking at subsequent minutes, nobody stood up indignant and said the school board did not have the right to vote on that decision. Nobody was indignant and said this process was flawed. No one collected signatures to put it on the ballot. So people who are in an uproar now were fine with the process when the vote came out in a way that they liked. Fast forward to 2017, the school board used the exact same process that was used in October 2015. Public meetings, warned meetings, lots of discussion, and then a vote. Same exact process, different outcome, and suddenly, there's an uproar and talking about a flawed process. My sense is that putting this out to a community vote would be the flawed process for the reasons that people who spoke before me said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark? Mark, way in the back here. Could you stand, please? Sandy, I couldn't see you.
Okay, that's okay. My name is Sandy Dooley, and I've lived here for 45 years. I see this question of the Rebel name as a human rights issue. And I think that every student, every child who participates in our education programs here in South Burlington has a right to be in an environment that, in every respect, supports his or her opportunity to take full advantage of what we're offering here. And I think there's ample evidence that the Rebel identifier interferes with that. We have a constitution that guarantees everyone in this country equal protection. I have to say, I applaud, or I encourage the school board not to put this to a vote, first of all, for the reasons we elected you to do this, but it just pains me to think that one might think that our students' human rights are subject to a popular vote. I mean, this is a basic right of our students, to be in an environment that supports them, to take full advantage of the school, the wonderful educational offerings we have here. And I think there's significant evidence that the Rebel identifier undermines that for some of our students. So I implore you not to put it to a vote, and to stand by your decision to retire the Rebel name. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're going to move on with our next agenda item, which is the citizen petition.
We already have. Yeah, just kind of moving into that.
Yeah, we did move into that a little bit. I do want to acknowledge, the board has received a number of emails since our meeting last week, and we just want to thank all the folks who've taken the time and energy to communicate with the board. We appreciate that. Originally, I know I was scheduled to be participating in this meeting by phone from a remote location, but if the board will indulge me, I'd like to maybe start with a statement that I was going to have a colleague read. Is everybody okay with that? And this is from my perspective. Though I respect the efforts of a group of community members securing enough signatures to warrant consideration of an advisory ballot item on both the Rebel nickname and expenses associated with changing it exclusively for South Burlington sports teams, I do not support the board taking action on the petitions for the following reasons. A decision to delegate the authority of the board, and in fact, the school administration, undermines the responsibilities granted in state statute and the 18-month process, which began in 2015 and ended in February 2017. That process was long and painstaking, with much community feedback on both pros and cons of retaining or retiring the nickname. It was also a lawful process. Though I understand more recently that some community members may have disengaged after the board had decided to retain the name in October 2015, that decision came with caveats and specific direction to administration to follow up on, among other things, student feedback and rebranding possibilities. The board did its due diligence, with some reminders by interested parties holding us accountable for what we had agreed to do in the first place. There were some fits and starts in these conversations in mid-2016, but the board was clear in its intent and its actions to revisit the topic of the nickname. I want to briefly speak about the student and staff survey, which was administered after that decision. At no time did the board require a survey or that it be statistically sound survey if administered. My understanding is that this was intended as a barometer of student climate, and that administrators and staff were having informal dialogue with students during the same time period. Even in early 2016, in an informal conversation with Mr. Burke that he shared with me, there was early indication that rebranding was not likely to be a recommended course of action. The feedback which was provided to the board prior to the February 2017 decision was more than adequate and persuasive in supporting the recommendation to retire the nickname, in my judgment. I respect that changes to the original imagery and branding of the Rebel nickname have occurred over... over the past decades to reflect more contemporary cultural values. Arguably, it could be suggested that the Rebel nickname was successfully rebranded when all the Confederate imagery, mascot, and songs were eliminated. Yet here is another board and another administration, having weighed feedback once again, deciding to retire the vestiges of incremental decisions made years ago. Concerns about the nickname and its branding were voiced at its inception and have been brought up within the schools, in the community, and to previous boards on a regular basis. I am concerned about the slippery slope of precedent which might generate future such petitions aggravated by frustrations in educating spending, education spending, and property taxes on such line items as which co-curricular clubs the community would choose to support, on what a cap might be on special education spending, and on such other board responsibilities as performance appraisals and labor negotiations where due process and labor law statutes apply. I am also concerned about the narrow guardrails of the petitions being exclusive to only sports teams. What message does that send about school pride and inclusion to all our students who don't or can't participate in sports? What message does that send to all our students about being welcome and part of a unified school community? I completely respect the varied opinions shared among our community. I especially appreciate those of multi-generational families who, in large part, founded and built the great city we all live in and funded the legacy of our school system, many of whom who have been made to feel criticized and judged for the desire to preserve a proud tradition they and their extended families have known through their school experiences. I also respect those who have spoken up for change based on their willingness to be open to cultural humility regardless of their personal attachment to the nickname, who have also been judged as pandering to a minority, accused of being shamed into action by outside special interest groups, and overdoing it on being politically correct. There should be no shame or righteousness in either of these positions. There should also be no judgment of our neighbors for their sincere beliefs. Despite many public and private conversations I've been engaged in since that decision was made in February of this year, there is no new information which has been forthcoming which would persuade me that administration has not been forthright and honest, and most importantly, considerate of the well-being and future of all students in making their recommendation. Unlike many of us, they are with all our students day in and day out. I trust their judgment fully in this matter. My hope is that we can retire the Rebel nickname with the dignity it deserves for having defined the quality and character of SB graduates for over 50 years, and that we collectively can embrace the choice our current students make to identify and unify themselves going forward. Thank you. I want to turn to my board colleagues for other comments, opinions. Martin?
My battery's dead. Here, try this one. So first of all, I agree with everything that you just said, Elizabeth, but I just wanted to add a statement as well. This comes down really to a very simple proposition. If I ask the community through a referendum to weigh in on an issue, am I willing to replace my judgment for the majority view? And the answer in this particular case is no. The board made its decision after significant feedback and deliberation, and that decision was not based on what we thought the majority may or may not want. It was based on what we understood was in the best interest of our entire student body and employees. Even if I thought the majority of the community would support the board's decision and reject the ballot, I would not be in favor of placing the referendum on the ballot. We should not seek affirmation of our decisions through ballot referenda. Instead, the community has the opportunity to affirm or deny their support for board member decisions in elections for their representatives. We also do not need a vote on this issue so that people can be heard. There have been many opportunities to be heard. Indeed, we have heard all sides of this issue over the past nearly two years. Since our decision to retire the Rebels' name, we have continued to hear rationales for keeping the Rebels' name, rationales that we previously heard and took into account in our deliberations. Whether a majority of those who would vote on this petition support those rationales or not, it is not, however, relevant to the decision. It is not an issue on which the majority sentiment should take precedence. Where an action is hurtful to a few people, asking the community if it bothers them is not the answer. Where a subgroup of students and teachers are legitimately offended by what is supposed to be a unifying school nickname, asking the community to weigh in is not the answer. I understand that many community members are fine with the Rebel name or have strong attachments to it, but within our schools, the name has and continues to cause divisiveness. It does not foster an inclusive and welcoming atmosphere. Putting this issue to a vote would not change that. As the elected representatives of the community on the school board, we made the decision that we and our high school and district administration believe is best for South Burlington students. I stand by this decision, and any vote on this referendum would not change the basis of that decision. Therefore, I would exercise the authority of this board to decline to put the issue on the ballot. Thank you.
As I stated last week, I do not think we should place the two questions regarding the Rebel name on a ballot for a public vote. First, the school board is elected to make sometimes difficult decisions regarding our schools on behalf of the community that elects us. To delegate our authority back to the community would be irresponsible and would not be legal. Any vote on the petitions would necessarily be non-binding, according to legal advice we have received. We, as a board, would need to vote again after any vote on the petitions to determine whether the results of the vote would change our votes on the issue of the Rebel name. Second, a vote would likely further divide the community at a time when we need to be coming back together. Neighbors will spend time, effort, and money trying to convince each other to vote one way or another about the Rebel name rather than channeling that energy into the name change process. I would prefer to see South Burlington spend the next month focused on the things that unite us as a community and celebrate this opportunity to move forward with a new and exciting name. Third, some community members simply will not feel heard unless the board backs down from its decision to change the name. I assure you that the board has heard the concerns of the community on both sides of the Rebel name issue. Two of our board members have been listening to feedback since 2015 on this issue. All of us have received numerous emails and other communications about this issue over the past several months in what is the latest iteration of a discussion that has flared up several times over the past decades since the name was originally chosen. The community also had a chance to make its voice heard in March. There were two write-in candidates running for school board on a platform of keeping the Rebel name and significantly reducing the budget. Those candidates were defeated by two candidates who, at the time, were on record as supporting the decision of the previous board regarding the Rebel name. We've heard the community, but speaking for myself only, as I do not presume to speak on behalf of the other board members, there has been no new information provided during these discussions that changes the basis for the decision I made. In fact, there's been information provided that has reinforced for me the importance of changing the name at this time. I did not make my decision by guessing what a majority of the community might want, so a community-wide vote would not change the basis for my decision. I do want to share just a few thoughts about the basis for my original decision for those who were not following this debate back in February when we voted. My one and only focus as a school board member is to make the best decisions I can with the mission of making the schools the best they can be. All of my decisions flow from that singular focus. The needs of current and future students are paramount in my mind and take priority over the feelings of alumni, parents, the wider community, and those outside of the community who have an opinion. This is admittedly uncomfortable to say and for many to hear, but my number one priority as a school board member is the students for whom the district is providing an education. When the administrators and teachers who work with our kids every day, who hear their concerns, who see their challenges and accomplishments firsthand, tell me that this change will make our schools more inclusive and welcoming places to learn and grow, I feel I need to support them in that goal. There is a group of students, a large group, not one or two, and not only students of color, who feel that the Rebel name does not represent them or the image that they would like their schools to project. I do not believe they are playing the victim, as some in the community have accused them. Rather, they are standing up for themselves and making a statement that they are part of this community too and have a right to make space for themselves and future students in it. I am proud of these students for seeing a way that they can make their schools better and having the courage to stand up and try to make that change. The board has heard the arguments on both sides, and it is time to put the matter to rest so we can focus on the important work at hand, which is continuing to make our schools the best they can be. This is not a decision that we can or should delegate to a referendum. It was the board's responsibility to make this decision based on a recommendation from the administration and to own that decision, and I do. This is why I affirm the commitment I made when I voted in February, why I support the ongoing process to find a new name, and why I do not believe that a decision the board has already made and was within its authority to make should be put up for a vote. Thank you.
Steve or Alex?
I'll go.
Alex?
Okay, only, thank you, Bridget. Thank you, everyone. I have been working on this and trying to come to a decision on this over the past week or so and actually did not arrive into a decision until about lunchtime today, so I don't have a prepared statement, but I am going to tell you some of my thought process. One was to look at the law regarding the citizen petitions, and it's in Title 17 and refers to the voters being able to call a special meeting on the application of 5% of the voters. And that refers to a bunch of the things that the voters are empowered to do, such as electing a city clerk and a few other things. Pietro last week said that it was a very limited focus, but there are a few things. Not among those things is things like details, such as what the nickname of the school is and where the, how the money is spent. He also referred to Title 16, where he mentioned that the school board has broad powers to make decisions, including decisions that are covered by the subject of the two petitions. So there's a bit of a conflict between the two laws, and I think what it comes down to is legislative intent. The legislative intent of Title 17, which is where the 5% of the voters' petition comes, does not intend for the 5% of the voters to be able to petition anything they want, such as our address code for board members at board meetings and so on. It is for some very specific things, and I actually do not have them written down here, so I can't go into what they are. But the things that are not covered, excuse me, the things that are addressed by the two petitions are not covered by it. And Pietro also mentioned several Supreme Court decisions that affirmed that, that the scope of the titles, you know, the citizen petition law and the powers of school board laws falls, it goes to the school board and based on legislative intent. So there's my spiel on that. However, a week ago, I thought to myself, it would be okay with me to put it on there. Why not? You know, the people asked for it, why not? And my thought on that has started to evolve, and it has changed. You know, initially, I thought this was a harmless thing to do. You know, why not? We could have this thing done, and it would be over with. But I don't think that's the true intent of what's going on. I hear a lot of talk about, you know, various aspects of the budget and the transparency and so on, and I think every single one of them has been addressed, and I think well. And I think, you know, new complaints keep arising. You know, a few weeks ago, there was a bunch of people who wanted to have a no-confidence vote in the superintendent. Just, and it didn't go anywhere. I received about 60 emails with long letters of support of the superintendent, and I haven't heard anything of it. So I feel like the school board and the school district is becoming under attack by what anything, whatever works, you know, throw it at the wall and see what sticks. And so ultimately, I think it comes down to the Rebel. You know, I was hoping to be able to make a deal and say, "We'll get it on the ballot. I'll try to get it on the ballot if the people who want it on the ballot would be willing to support the budget." But I have heard zero from anybody about that in any of the online chatter. Nobody has said that to me, that they would support the budget if we put it on the ballot.
You got an email from me specifically?
I did. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, excuse me.
You can read it. And so I think the intent of the petition is to keep rallying the people who are in favor of keeping the Rebel name by whatever means necessary, whether it means going to a level-funded budget or you name it. So in practical terms, I don't think it's something that I want to do. And for those of you who want the Rebel, I am sorry. I do hear you, and I respectfully disagree. I'm sorry to have all these unhappy feelings about it, but I think it's time to just have a vote on the budget and the budget only. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
I guess I get the door prize in the last. So similar to Alex, I spent far more time than anybody should studying state statute and am unfamiliar with it. If anybody would like to do it themselves, if they're having trouble getting to sleep some night, legislature.vermont.gov statutes. And that will take you to Title 17, which talks about the petition and special meeting process that Pietro discussed at our last meeting. And then Title 16, and particularly 16 VSA 562 and 16 VSA 563, respectively enumerate the powers of the electorate and the powers of the board. And so from my study then, and I also have the two ballot referenda, and so let me take the second one first. So it's basically a prohibition of the expenditure of funds by the school board or by the city council. And so if I look at the enumerated powers of both the board and the electorate, let's start with the electorate. So 16 VSA, Section 562, Paragraph 8, says, "Except for one-time purchase items that the board warrants as a separate article, the board shall determine how the authorized funds shall be expended." And so it would seem that that ballot referenda item specifically contravenes state statute, and that's not what it's intended. In other words, it's necessarily not going to be a binding item because it's not designed to do that. And also in the board's powers, 16 VSA 563, Paragras 11, A and B, say basically that the board shall prepare and distribute the budget, and it specifies the form. But basically, we present an intact budget, and the electorate votes on an intact budget. So there simply is no statutory mechanism for a specific line item, and so I don't see where that ballot referenda would conform to statute. With the referenda item with respect to the name, it's not as clear to me. The powers of the board under 16 VSA 562, 2, and Paragraph 15 talk about sound administration, general legislative powers, give the board broad authority to set policy for the schools. It seems to me that you could pretty much eliminate any ballot referenda under those criteria, but I don't know it would necessarily be wise to do that, particularly when a citizen petition is such a rare occurrence. I meant to ask the city clerk, when the last time we've had a citizen petition submitted to us? I've lived here since 2009 in South Burlington. I'm not aware of any. That wasn't something like a bond vote or creation of reserve fund or something. I don't think those were citizen petitions, but it's rare, and it required over 700 signatures, considerable effort by a part of our electorate. And I think at this, I'd go back to, I actually wasn't here for town meeting. I was on vacation with my family, but I did have a good friend of mine read a statement, and I addressed the Rebel name issue head-on. And I prefaced it by saying, "I ran for school board as a volunteer. I literally heard that there were going to be vacancies on the school board if somebody didn't run." And so I collected 30 signatures, I think 37 in total. I submitted my petition on January 30th, and on February 1st, the vote was taken to retire the Rebel name, and that exploded into the issue. I did not run for school board to have this be my issue. And nonetheless, in the statement, I said, "I intend to support the board's decision. I believe they arrived at their conclusion honestly. I will continue to support your decision." But I also said, "It is critically important that the students, parents, citizens, and taxpayers who feel strongly that the Rebel..." taxpayers who feel strongly that the Rebel name should be retained need to be active participants in the process going forward. The worst thing that could happen, in my view, is that otherwise energetic and enthusiastic supporters of South Burlington schools feel estranged or left behind. We cannot view this as a win-lose issue, or assuredly, we will all lose. I am committed to not letting this one issue divide us." And in that vein, and Martin, I appreciate your recapping the history of the decision, and I've spoken with all of you individually about this. And honestly, notwithstanding an 18-month process, or 15-month process, I guess I should count that, if one were casually observing the minutes, the first time that you had any hint that a decision was going to be made to change the name was January 18th. For February 1st, that simply wasn't enough time to bring the public along. And so, and as I said to you, Elizabeth, just because people weren't actively paying attention doesn't mean that they don't care deeply about something. And so I think it's fair to say that the process, you know, to what Dan Albrecht said, the process could have been more rigorous as far as including the community. Now, that ultimately doesn't change. I respect the administration's research, their decision, the views of the Student Diversity Union. You know, I believe ultimately that changing the name is the right thing to do, but I also believe that we should give the community a voice. And so I would vote to include the petition. And again, it's advisory. It's definitely the school board's purview to make the ultimate decision, but I feel that it would be the right thing to warn the name change petition.
Any other comments from the board before I open it up for public discussion? Alex, could you hand me the clipboard on that particular agenda item? Actually, both of them, I think, because I think people have signed up. Any other comments? All right, I'll open it up for public discussion. The first individual we have is Sheldon Katz. Go ahead.
On advice of my wife, I have no further comments.
Thank you.
I thought we were, it was already commented.
Yeah, I thought that was the public comment.
So I passed.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, you were next. Michael Rozi or Rozzy? Sorry if I'm misreading that.
I think you left.
Okay, David Chiman?
I have a statement from David, from David Chiman. However, I believe that we, that this has been covered, and I think David would feel that his comments have been already expressed.
Thank you. Joanne Hidcamp?
I spoke already.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for brief public comment. Mark?
Thank you for doing a thankless job. I don't, I don't know how, you know, most of your life, you do this in front of nobody who's here. And then something that comes up that frankly, the central thing you're supposed to be doing is helping the kids in this community and building it, and you do a really good job of that. Thank you.
Okay, seeing other no comments, do we have a motion?
Unfortunately, my printout has a big white streak, so I don't have the full wording of the ballot referenda, but I would make a motion to warn as part of our next duly-warned petition. That's another thing, it shouldn't be at additional expense if we also have to warn the budget and it appears on the same item. But I would make a motion to include the first of the two submitted petitions regarding just the name South Burlington Rebels to be included on the next ballot.
Do I have a second? Okay, seeing no second, the motion fails. I do want to just make a comment. Steve, first off, it's a privilege to serve with you. I really appreciate the thoughtful effort you've put into considering this issue and look forward to continuing to work with you during my tenure. Thank you.
And I with you. Thank you.
Oh, did I lose it?
Oh, no.
All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 5, Considering the Revised School District Budget. David, I know you've got a presentation.
So Board, while the projector is coming on, I'll transition a little bit. The budget information that I've put together with the help of my administrative staff is very similar to what was presented last week. I've added a few things and provided some additional detail as a result of some of the questions that have come up to the board and to the administration last week. So first of all, I want to just point out some things consistent with our budget, and again, some folks have heard about this, but our end policies, which are specific to our outcomes that we desire for our students with this budget, continue to be a focused area of our work and improvement. This represents, again, a tax rate decrease of 1.20. Class sizes are maintained at all levels, at areas that are appropriate, and we're going to, I'm going to skip to that in a bit here to share a little bit more about our class sizes. Again, it preserves programs at the high school and the middle school, and no incremental spending on the nickname change. And again, as we said last time, there's a cost savings associated with health care. This is a hard sheet to see. This is, again, just highlighting that initiative sheet that has the mandates through the contingency teacher. And again, this is all available. It is in your packets. We did try to make it available, and it will, it is also and will be available on the website. I'm going to go into some of those details with you in just a second. Again, this particular budget on these incentives, it does allow the district to move forward. It does recognize some further reductions. It keeps our class sizes, as I said earlier, we're moving, where the recommendation was to add another classroom teacher to both Rick Marcott and Orchard. Sorry about that. Here, it allows for our contingent teacher, against, this is important for people to know that the contingent teacher is in this proposed budget. It does allow for our pilot program to move forward. We have some resources in there, and we're going to talk a little bit. Some of the questions that came up from the last meeting to the board was specific to trauma and some of those data points. Provides our response to our students at the high school currently on a waiting list, and you'll get a chance to see that, so providing some additional support for our students at the high school. And then allowing additional resources, especially in areas that are required at the high school as a result of some class sizes. Personalized learning plans, and again, looking at our preschool partners. I do have some data on that for you as well. That continues to be an area that increases, and we need to provide that support. HR support, again, just on how we get that work done based on the number of employees that we had. And master planning and visioning, and I'll show you that again. Again, this was a reduction from the $75,000 to $40,000 that's in there to get a better understanding of our facilities. I'm not going to read through all of these. This provides you some more specific details on the programming. And again, I would strongly encourage folks, you know, to look at this a little bit more in depth. I'm going to just pick off a few things. The Act 166, which is, provides universal pre-K to our students, and this is an ad here, we put this in here, current, the current number of students that we serve is 311, and we have over 45 partners that we provide support to, and obviously, they provide support to our students. The personalized learning plans I covered earlier, but this is in support of ensuring that we can continue to do that work, so we have some resources in there as well. Part of that work, in order to get the personalized learning plans, we have some general coverage to help our staff, our teachers actually have the necessary support, so they don't have to be in study house, so they can actually be doing that work, again, allocating those resources appropriately. And HR system support, as I said earlier. Financial software, pilot program for trauma, we're going to talk more about trauma, so I'm going to kind of move over that fairly quickly. Again, Board, stop me up if you have specific questions in this area. As a result of kind of that increased need, we have some additional resources in the BCBA. We have additional resources of fairly small, but just incremental increase, .7 to adding another .1, so bringing it to a .8 full-time person to help at Rick Marcott's school. We have some literacy support, which was actually taken out in the last budget, so that was taken out. Part of the delay was a result of just the implementation of these programs, given the timeframe of the year in which you would have to do that, is significantly puts us in jeopardy of fulfilling that opportunity. Added sizes, we're going to talk, again, you see some size here, projections, and you'll see that in well in some of the information, but you see currently what our sophomore class is currently, and next year, the sophomore class is moving up, and that's part of the need for additional sections. Here's the class size, we're going to see that in a bit. Obviously, resources for those added classes. And the facility needs, as I said earlier, went from 75 down to 40. This allows, again, for information about structural, electrical, and mechanical functionalities of our high school and the middle school, and the contingent teacher you see there as well as in the budget. This, again, hard for some folks to see, represents the total amount of our budget. It's, again, the 4.89%. Also, you can see here that another area that we need to report is our cost for equalized pupils, which we have to report, that percentage, which is 2.32. And obviously, our tax rate, which we also have to report. We've added that detail in the notes down here to include all of the things that need to be on the ballot. Again, that was an area of confusion in the past. This is similar. The only thing we've added is some highlighted areas have changed, just to let you know this. Again, this is where you'll see our classroom allocated resources specific to Rick Marcott and Orchard. You see those changes reflected, and you see them associated through either the core area or those other support areas as well. Here you see that the add, and again, corresponds to the initiative sheet that we started out with at the 7.40. The Rebel nickname, again, just highlighting kind of the incremental spending here before, what kind of our run rate has been prior to for a five-year cycle. We've been very transparent about the 25,100 to do the floor that has the Rebel name in it. That's part of a bond, obviously. Going forward, we had the money for the name change in, and then we've taken it out. A new piece of information, as I reported last time, I think it was on Friday, we had a meeting, I didn't, but Patrick Burke attended a meeting, and the Vermont Principals Association Activity Standards Committee unanimously approved the South Burlington High School only purchasing one uniform.
I just want to pause and say, that's great news.
Thank you, Alex. Yeah?
Unexpected, and great news.
So again, I think, you know, it does represent, you know, in Vermont, working together, and certainly, you know, our partners in the various associations, I think, understand some of the complexities that we have. The next sheet, this is one that you've seen before. Again, looking at kind of our trend data, remember that we're looking at here, it was only through March, and so we're looking at our tuition of our outplayed students and our social services, social support that we provide. And so it just gives a little bit of kind of indication of some of the things we're really trying to work hard to actually curb. However, we also need to provide services to children that are exhibiting that need. This is a new slide that we added, just a little bit more on our special education headcount, and this particularly refers to students that are counted on our December 1st each year that are eligible for special education services. So again, walks you through currently what we have available for data, and we'll continue to provide this as we go forward, I think, in the future. This next one is a new slide as well. Board, you had some questions that came up specific to trauma, and again, we don't have exact definitions of what trauma is, although the ACES study, of those of you that are familiar with that, I think begins to correlate. So we've provided some data here specific to what we're seeing at some of our very, some of our schools and the percent based on the enrollment. Again, this is, this is just our work in providing you some of, kind of a snapshot of that.
Martin has a question.
Yep, Martin?
So I assume this is relatively new, gathering this data, so we don't have a trend line down that. Is that correct?
That is correct, Martin.
Can you describe that ACES? Is that ACES? I'm sorry.
Is the special education child count separate from the trauma count?
Yes. Well, not necessarily, Jerry. There could be, there could be a student.
These students experiencing trauma could be students who we see in special education.
Yeah, so they could be, some of these students could be students that are on IEPs.
I'm sorry, could you clarify, is it ACES?
ACES. Go ahead, Joanna.
Adverse childhood experiences? There's a survey that a lot of communities are using to look at how many adverse childhood experiences you have, and they use that, and that data, the number of experiences you have relates to the amount of trauma and that effect on your ability to, on your brain.
Is this a new assessment tool?
No, it's been, it's been the last five years or so.
I'd say five years, however, I think it's been more, it's been being paid attention to it more greatly by, you know, some of our mental health providers, legislators, medical people.
Less in school.
Joanne, are you able to give just some examples of the traumas in quotes that would be assessed under this measurement tool? Just for, I know the audience.
It's a survey in front of me, but it's like, you know, not having enough food, having people argue in your family, having witnessed abuse, having witnessed abuse, have been affected by abuse, verbal abuse, so physical abuse. There's a whole list of them. There's a long survey and a short survey, you know, substance abuse in your family, those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
I did leave this blank because there were singletons here, and we didn't want those to be individually identified to a school, but rest assured, it does total to 22. You have a question?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is this considered to be a social service? A trauma program?
Well, I suppose it could, that could be answered in many, many different ways. I think, you know, it is a social service issue. We're working collaboratively with our social service providers, but for us in education, we are trying to deliver education to children, and we need them to be available. So I think, you know, there's a lot of overlap here on the work that we do in helping kids to be available for instruction, and we work hard with our partners in our social service sector to do that.
May I ask? It was just, it was just a point of clarification, because I went on your website, and there's a position paper that was put out December 11, 2014, Proposals for Addressing Education Funding Challenges. Wasn't that, that's on your website?
Yes.
Okay. So, but I was just, I'm in clarification to know if there's any state money, because it says, "One of the drivers of the increase in Vermont's cost for pupil is the additional social services that school districts are providing. Unfortunately, the amount that schools spend on such social services is not transparent to school boards or to the community that pays for them in large part through property to school boards, or to the community that pays for them, in large part through property caps." So what I'm wondering is, is this funded at all through the state?
I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
Is there funding for this through the state, or does this necessarily come out of the South Burlington budget?
I don't know, Joanne, can you answer that?
I think I can. Do you want to go to that next slide, David? Because we did list out.
Before you get into that, Joanne, let me just make one comment, because I know the position paper that was developed was a result of a shift of, not necessarily a shift of funding, but a shift of some responsibilities to school districts for what I characterize broadly as some of the social service aspects. We haven't really, as a board, had a mechanism until fairly recently to start to monitor that, and I know one of the board's interests, and I don't know where it will ultimately fall in terms of priorities, is to look at working more closely with the legislature and documenting the incremental spending at the district level associated with providing social services in terms of how it affects the learning environment. So, speaking for myself, having served on the board for over a decade, this information is becoming new in terms of being able to monitor it. So, Joanne, I'll turn it over to you here.
And I agree, I think we really don't have a good record. This is just a list of the kind of services and resources that we provide for students, and many of them are things that you recognize that are always coming to schools, nursing, nutritional guidance. We also have SB mentoring, which is part of our school. We have Howard therapists that come in, and now that's paid for by private insurance or Medicaid, that's not funded through the school district. Our Howard clinicians are funded through a Medicaid reimbursement that we receive. Special education, as John Ovindis often spoke of, is at a fifty-five to ninety percent reimbursement rate, and for our state place students, a hundred percent reimbursed. Volunteers, paraprofessionals are paid for through your tax dollars. ELL is also funded through some federal grant funding. Coordinated service plans are really just the work that we do with other agencies to try and coordinate our work with the Department of Children and Families and Mental Health, and trying to make sure that we're providing wrap services, so it's not just the school's responsibility for serving students, but the families and the students, the families and the students are also getting community service to support them. Our EST and five-oh-four plans are generally funded. Behavior plans are part of any kind of a plan a student might have. Our mindfulness and resiliency is a program that we run, where we're training teachers to use strategies that are very effective in working with children with trauma, that's paid for through general ed fund dollars, I believe. Our behavior facilitators are general fund dollars. Girls on the Run is funded through our Medicaid grants that we have. PBIS is a system that we're setting up, stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, which is building the capacity of our classrooms and schools to meet the needs of many different children, so that we don't have to have special programs. Therapeutic placements are largely for our students with special education needs, and those are reimbursed, and tutoring can be, it depends on which plan they're from. If you're thinking about the pilot program that we're talking about, that one in particular will be funded through special education dollars. I hope that helps.
Just to clarify, you were using several funds, I want to make sure, you talked about general fund, special education fund, and ed fund dollars. Can you just define those to make sure that everybody understands what you're talking about?
So, the special education funds are state reimbursement, so we have that state reimbursement, and John, expect me to come wrong, we get our reimbursement rate is fifty-five percent, so we get reimbursed for those expenditures, and for high expenditure kids, we get ninety percent reimbursement after we spend fifty thousand dollars. And for state place students, we get a hundred percent reimbursement, so that's special education funds. For our general ed funds, I'm assuming it's from the ed fund.
Ed fund, okay, so it's just those two.
That's one of the same, yeah.
Well, at one point you said general fund, and that, that's a different answer.
Joanne might be able to answer that.
I just repeat what.
Joanne said, "Some of this is paid for by Medicaid," and that's shown here, so don't forget that one, too.
So we're going to move on. Thank you, Joanne, don't go far. This chart's hard to see. Actually, this chart just gives you a little bit of actually what Joanne was speaking to, but this chart displays the percentage of the stressors influencing students served by our school clinicians within South Burlington, and it illustrates the complex nature of the school-based clinicians' work. And so along the bottom, I know it's probably hard for you to see, starting over here, discrimination, self-harm, suicide, incarceration, food insecurities, all the way down here to partner violence. And so this provides you with some of the information about some of the things that are happening with our school service clinicians as they serve our students. This is.
Clinicians, how many?
We currently have five. Six, excuse me, six. Full-time. Yep. So this chart, this next chart, again, busy, this looks at disabilities over time, and again, we had some questions that came to the board at the last meeting, and so we wanted to try to provide you a little bit of detail on this. So, in each of these categories, on the bottom, again, hard to see on the screen, but autism on the far left, developmental delay, emotional disturbance, other health impairment, which would be where you would see ADD and ADHD, there's a longer list than that, specific learning disabilities, and then speech and language. And so you can see the years in which we've been keeping, again, we can share with you kind of how that has happened, two thousand and nine through two thousand and sixteen. This next one, again, same slide that we had before, we've given a little bit more of information on the, again, the total budget expense increase, net of the revenue, again, is at one-point-six. Again, in part, what you're looking at, and again, we've tried to provide some isolated arrows to the general fund in what we're getting for reimbursements. And clearly, you can see tuition, again, these are, they're all part of that, but these are maybe the bigger ones here to highlight, the reimbursement for shared services, the tuition from other districts, and then tuition, special ed tuition money. And then down here, at the bottom, again, you see under state funds, which is here, and then you see special education, and the amount, again, the larger numbers, the special education, which you've heard Joanne and John talk about, that's that three-point-nine million dollars, and then the three-hundred thousand on care and custody, that add into that revenue. Next, I'm not going to necessarily call this out, it just brings the revenue down to the sum total. The sum total obviously adds up to what was represented on page nine, and again, this just provides that clarity on a revenue. This is obviously the proposed budget, we've added just the visual that this is the budget that we're talking about, that we're asking the board to consider, and then, if so, the community. A few things on here, you can see where we've made some, we've made, we have some areas that we're watching, obviously, on some grades that we have highlighted here, we're just being watchful. Again, this is with, and important to say, with the added teacher at Central School, and also the added teacher at Orchard, which is the next slide here, as well as a contingent teacher, which will be used and be watched in these areas that are highlighted in these Next one is the, looking at both the middle school, and then we'll go to the high school. But again, this is the proposed, and again, it gives you the enrollments, and then the average, the class size average, based on the core as well. The high school, important to note here, I know I've gotten a few questions about this one, one-seventy-six. Remember, I've reported out one-ninety-one, but remember fifteen of our students, of our tuition students, attend the middle school, so if you go back and you look at the middle school, you'll see that there's, you'll see that noted there. So that is our tuition students currently at the high school. So there are tax rate history, with some added information just on, we added to the right, actually, I don't know if we added that new.
Yes.
Yes, we did. Thank you, John. And then the five-year average at two-point-four-four. This is just the ten-year average, again, a little, just a tad lower at two-point-two-six, and representing, again, showing you the tax rate change, which is a one-point-two percent reduction. This is a new page, and this, we've had, you know, we've had people that have asked for more information, so on the right side, we're wanting to let people know that we will post this up as a tool for our community to be able to use. In simple form, it allows our community members to put in, anyone, again, as it says over here, if they are, their household income is below a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars, then they would be eligible for income sensitivity. Income sensitivity is then calculated based on these amounts, in two thousand and fifteen, it was two-point-eight-nine, and you can see the corresponding downward trend, to the proposed year is at two-point-five-nine. When you apply those, at some, at an income level of sixty-five, you can see what happens or has been happening, a thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine, over to the right, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-four, and gives you the total cumulative. If you were paying on your home value, if the home value was of two-hundred-and-thirty-five, you can see how that correlates. So again, this is going to be an active sheet that you'll be able to use, we're going to post that up very quickly, so people can use that, and again, just depicts kind of the incremental, the changes over time. Let me pause if there's any questions. Hearing none, I'll go. This is the same slide, again, just giving your information about our enrollment, and here, again, you see our tuition students, our equalized pupils, and then their staffing ratios that we added last time. Next chart is unchanged, although we gave a few more details on the right about what's in there or what's not in there, and then some of the breakdown. In general, I would just say, you know, it's flat for us. Most of my colleagues across the state have been seeing quite different, quite different pictures. This is our, just our G-six policy, I keep bringing that back, it just provides information about our current, what we work to do, and then this is district-wide, although we're very, we're watchful also, as I said earlier, in those enrollments, about how that works in each of our schools. Five-year history, it pulls in salaries and wages and healthcare. This is a chart we added, this, there was a percent change in all years, we also added the annual growth rate for clarity purpose as well.
So, just to clarify on this, and maybe there should be an asterisk on this, that part of that annual increase is not an increase in the wages of an individual teacher, it's the fact that we have increasing number of FTEs.
That's right. That's a good point, Martin. So, remember, in this, in this current year, we added staff, so if someone's just saying that's correlated to just salary increases, or in this case, benefits, you have to be clear about what you've done to the cohort over time, which is your point, the cohort.
I would think that this, I mean, for purposes of further communication, if this is an.
Put an asterisk.
Well, no, actually, I would put the number of FTEs that that represents, I'd add a line, so one can see, that's one way, or you can put the asterisk, but in some manner.
Good point.
Reflect that, thanks.
Very good. This is, again, just a reminder that we do have a stewardship plan, and I'm very proud that we do. We have a lot of folks that work hard to assess our buildings, we're one of the few that do that, and we have a plan in place. Obviously, with this particular proposed budget, there's some rescheduling that would need to happen. We have a long history that goes well before two thousand and seventeen on the things that we've accomplished, but I want to be clear that when we look at, you know, things like flooring and tiling, you can see that we're doing our due diligence to not only replace, but also renew even the things that we replaced, you know, fourteen years ago, that are at their end of life. So again, this just provides that, and that, that's, the more complete stewardship plan is available online, on our website. This provides, we did add this column to the right also, which is the year-to-year percent change, and so for South Burlington, looking at our, again, this is on ed spending per equalized pupil, which is just showing you what we've done over time, where we are in South Burlington. Because of the timeframe that we're now in, we are, we're able to get information from our colleagues, so Burlington at seven percent, six percent, four percent, five and five, which is the group average, and you can see where we currently are on our cost, again, our ed spending per equalized pupil.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Does that include the tuition students?
That does not include the tuition students. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, because that's revenue.
Equalized pupils do not include tuition students.
So, I mean, it's important, obviously, to have this to compare against Burlington, Colchester, Milton, and Winewski, but I think it would be, it'd be an interesting point of information to know how much per seeded student, or is that not a good idea?
Not necessarily, I mean, I think that, one of the things that's important, and this is a, this is a good pause, because at, you know, equalized pupils, we don't count, we count those one-hundred-and-ninety-one students in tuition, and that comes with revenue, but it cannot be double-counted, you can't count revenue.
So this money, this money is only ed fund money, this isn't money, tuition money?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's correct. So this is kind of the apples to apples, which is essentially, I think, what you're asking.
I take my, I take my comment.
It's a good question.
I do think it would be good, though, to make another asterisk on this one, that it excludes tuition students, both the revenue and.
To be clear, that's a good point.
The ed fund draw, everyone characterize it.
This is, again, ed spending per equalized pupils, and not just our near neighbors, and again, it's important to note that we're a district, and obviously, we have many different configurations around the state, but where we currently rank, and again, this is not looking at a proposed eighteen, but this is where we currently are. This is a similar slide, we did put this percent in as well, and where the state average is in seventeen, and where our ranking is, so a hundred and nine districts spend more than us. This is the similar busy, busy chart that we've used, and we've really cut this in half, but I think there's important components to this, you know, on obviously understanding all of the intricacies or the complexities of education funding, and obviously, the things that we have to report, which comes right back down to what the effect will be, which is the tax rate that's indicated here. This one, I think, is really important, it's been helpful for me as I walk around and talk with community members. This is an area that folks have really appreciated, and understanding which, what is the result that I'm going to pay, and how does that get calculated, where does that come from? So you have proposed expenditure, you have the revenues that we've talked about, you have the yield that comes from the state, you have the common level appraisal on how homes are assessed and valued, and then your equalized pupils. That always in for South Burlington, again, to be a tax rate decrease of one-point-two-zero. You know, some conclusions here, just another slide away here, obviously, it continues to remain, to provide quality programs for South Burlington students, we are not currently a high-spending district, our tax rate has been reasonable, or what I would say, a flat, fairly flat over a number of years, or obviously, our outcomes for students has been amongst one of the highest, and, you know, the way our students currently participate and have outcomes on our standardized tests is also notable. And again, right back to the last slide here, that talks about, you know, our students continue to make great gains in what we want them to be able to do related to our ends, our final exit, it's a one-point-two tax rate reduction, class sizes remain reasonable, programs preserved, incremental spending, the nickname will not happen, and then healthcare costs. So that ends with a few additional details that came from either the public or the board last time.
Comments or questions from the board? Oh, thanks, David.
A quick, a quick comment. I think the two most important numbers from all this, in my view, is the one-point-six percent, what I'd call a net increase in the budget, which is the expenditures less the additional revenues that essentially are coming with the fact that we have those expenditures, that offset those, and then the one-point-two percent tax decrease. I think those are two items that. I think those are two items that should be front and center. So I would at least add in the proposed budget summary, you know, the net increase in expenditures. I saw it earlier on, but I think that's a very important piece of information, so.
Alex?
Yes, thank you, David, and thank you, Elizabeth. I'd like to go back to page 19. Oh, you're there already, great.
Fast.
Perhaps I'm talking about exactly what Martin's talking about, but the third to bottom line, where I believe it is special ed revenue reimbursement goes from 2.9 million in current year, and then 3.9 million in our proposed year. That is a story that has not been told well enough yet. I, I would suggest even making that its own exhibit, because I think a lot of people in the community are looking at the overall increase of the budget, and I think this is around 4.9% for this one. And the story that's not being told is the increase in revenues that are coming in. And, and that needs to be told as well. So I, I think somehow we need to do a better job of explaining this, that, you know, expenditures are up, what, 4.9% in this proposed budget, but revenues are also up significantly, and, and they're not revenues that are coming from property taxes. That is crucial for people's decision-making on how to vote on this budget. And I, and I think also, it's a, it's a testament to our, our administration doing a good job seeking out these revenues, and, you know, or maybe I'm wrong there, but I think it's something that we need to emphasize better. Thank you.
Other comments? We did have some folks that had signed up to ask questions or provide feedback on the budget. I'm not sure if people are still here, but Morris Mahoney.
Paul.
Okay.
I think he made a statement.
The next was Oliver Bugbee, which I think Diane read that statement. Sheldon Katz.
Paul.
Claudia Berger. Dan Albrecht.
All right. Slide page 28. One of the things that strikes me about this, and this is just something, I'm not asking to fix it right now, obviously, you've got the press, the agenda, putting a budget together. I guess what's worrisome is I see these long-term trends where enrollment's kind of, I won't say flat, but yeah, it's flat, yeah. Not defining like how much the demographer said. But if I'm looking left to right, I see student educator ratio, 10.34 is dropping down to 9.7, students to educator dropping, students to all-staff ratio. If we're going to get a handle on this, and just, because we already put off the deferred payment, so that's going to come back and bite us later, you know? So I just, I'm going to ask the boardroom just to keep an eye on this. With regards to the trauma data, I really appreciate having this extra slides. I was frankly stunned at the last meeting that we could not give basic questions answered, like, is it 10, is it more than 10 students or more than 100? So I, thanks for the extra information, it's really helpful. And again, it all gets to this larger mission creep of social services being funded through property taxes, but it's kind of weird, because this is in Vermont, where almost everybody has health insurance, because it's mandated pretty much, and people are on it, Dr. Dinosaur, et cetera, subsidies, to the extent that people are already paying for that. Do what you can to outsource that to therapists who could then build a private insurance rather than putting on the tax rolls. It seems appropriate, and obviously, the staff is doing that, but you've got to get a handle on this and start to bend the curve the other way. Because it's kind of weird when you sit there and you kind of go, we've got 500 employees for 2,000 students, is that roughly about right? I don't know if it's in this slide or in others. 248, 3, yeah, 489 all-staff and 2,000 something, so that's.
Yeah.
All part. And I don't know if any of us grew up with that, not to say the path is always the right way, but I think that's, that's sort of the frustration, is that there's all these cost drivers, and you have to try to get a hold of them. So that's my only comment about that, and I, I'll leave it at that for now. You guys got a lot to say.
So maybe just a quick, quick response to Diane. Just as he said, you know, there's, there's a fair amount of shock when you look at trauma. But remember, when you have trauma, you have to have a response. And so sometimes when people want to just do a direct comparison to, to a, a staff member to student ratios, you can't take out of the equation the trauma and the numbers of people that we've had to add to best support students. So, social services, we are looking at least restrictive, and we're looking at how we can partner together with our, with our partners to provide quality services. This is something that's not new. This is in part why we put in a pilot program, to look at how we can bend that curve. And so, you know, we, we, I think, I don't think we're ahead of it, but we're certainly trying to address it. And I think there's many folks, perhaps, in education, that we're, we're not yet aware of it yet. And we're trying to do our due diligence with your help, to try to ensure that our children are successful in the environment that we think they're best served. So, and the last thing I would say on the maintenance, I want to be really clear, we're spending a lot of money still to move forward important projects. We had a longer list. They aren't forgotten, they're being rescheduled. Just like when we started out 12 years ago, we had a huge list that we needed to address. And so we triage those and schedule those accordingly. They aren't forgotten, they're rescheduled, but we're doing a lot of things in this coming year, if this budget moves forward, to take care of our facilities the best we can. So again, just some clarity on, on not letting people think we're stopping all, you know, maintenance.
And Jerry, you were on the list?
Yeah, you know, this is a mass new information. I am a bit overwhelmed trying to really just sit it down. The comment I was going to make when I signed up for that list was, I'm having a bit of deja vu with this vote coming up. Deja vu takes me back to November of 2016, when I looked at the two choices for the President of the United States, and I said, do I really have to choose one of these two? And indeed, I did choose a third choice, I didn't choose either one of them. I apologize to anybody who voted for either Trump or Clinton, but I couldn't bring myself to do it. My concern with a no vote is job cuts, and I don't want to see anybody lose their position. My concern with the yes vote very simply is, the school system has exploded in terms of its responsibilities, and you are dependent upon a lot of external funds, both from paying students, but also from the state of Vermont. And I am seriously concerned with the budget of the state of Vermont because of its great dependency upon the federal government, and the federal government's debt level is in really deep due to right now, and I don't see it getting any better. So I see a cascade of problems eventually down the road. So it's damned if you do, damned if you don't. That's what, that's what I signed up for. Now, looking at this, looking at Chamberlain School and the middle school, one in every five students is a trauma, quote-unquote, trauma student, but I don't want to assign any jar of term here, but I'm just using the term you listed. How do you deal with the fact that in two of your schools, one in every five students has had some type of negative emotional or physical environment to deal with? How do you deal with that? And that's a whole different type of school system than I went to.
Yes, it is. Yeah, very clear it is, and again, for those of us who've been in education, Jerry, for a good long time, at least public education, we've definitely seen that trend, and it's a sad trend. That said, we can't, we can't just stop. We have to, we have to continue to work collaboratively. I think we have some really good examples of not just doing it ourselves. And Joanne alluded to some of the programs that we've done in a collaborative way within our county to provide good support. We need to do more of that. And we're, we're also trying to be leaders in that area to say, how can we collaborate? Because we can't do individual programs and, and keep it affordable. But at the same time, we can't not do something. Again, we can't, our, our schools in the past, we didn't have the same level, first of all, we didn't have the same level of inclusion, but we also didn't see a lot of the same manifestations in the, in some of the situations. So we're, we're, again, looking at ways that we can curb this.
Comment, Josh Guy?
Sorry.
Yeah, I was going to make a quick comment. David and I had our regular meeting in terms of the city-school collaboration with the city manager and the city council head, and one of the things that the city manager brought up is a reflection of mental health issues in the South Burlington area, as reflected in terms of emergency responders, and brought up just the number of suicide attempts that had been responded to by emergency personnel in the city. And it's a pretty significant increase from the city perspective. So I do feel, my sense is, both the city and the school are now in a position to provide data to the state, hopefully along with our neighbor, neighboring communities, to really highlight some issues that are affecting both city and school services, and both our ability to continue to provide services in both those, those civic entities. So, just a recent anecdotal conversation, but the city is noticing issues as well.
I think I asked you for more data, David, breaking out all these numbers.
I said, I also sent you an email so we can meet. Did you get that?
No, not yet. I haven't checked in a couple of hours. But the question that rests my mind is, you mentioned five clinicians, you mentioned Medicaid money. If it's possible to break down with regard to these social services, how much money is coming into the school system, or being reimbursed through Medicaid, through the state for social services? To get some idea, 10% of the budget is, 20% of the budget? It's really important to know how dependent we are from the state to pay for some of the expenses we're incurring, and I don't have any good idea of that at this point.
We can, we can do that.
I have a question about this slide that I forgot to ask.
This one?
Yeah, or maybe I did ask it, I just don't remember. So, does this one include the tuition students coming up with the student educator?
It does, it does in here.
Okay, so.
So again, it brings, you, you see the 191.
So that's the one that we're using, not the equalized pupil? Okay. So that, that's the number up above, the total students, that's our in-seat students, that's what's used for the student educator ratio, that was my question.
That's right, that's right. So this is not, this is not equalized.
Right, yeah. I just was wondering which one was being used below, and that answered my question. Thank you.
And again, we could break this down further, Martin, and we, we had this discussions in the past, but we, this was, again, part of the conversation that's happened at past meetings, and we, we could break this further down. We excluded, like, our special educators in, in some of the breakdown, because those, some of those individuals provide direct one-on-one services in that. But again, all-staff, you know, kind of pulls them, pulls them back in.
Oh, okay.
Right? Including library media. What I said before was, in some cases where you ask for data like this, what I have found over my years is that not everybody's reporting apples to apples. They won't include library media sometimes, where we do. We, we won't, they won't include other, other staff, and, or, again, that, that's where I think you can get, you know, some of the skewed data. This, this is, this is our data.
Fully burdened.
Yeah.
Other questions from the community?
Have Megan question here?
Yep, Megan, go ahead.
First, I want to thank you.
Who come?
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on the last question. I'm noting that there are roughly three times more students, Chamberlain, compared to Rick Mark, have some school in Orchard identified as having trauma-related conditions. And I don't know if you got exactly the answer, but I guess the answer I was hoping for was, how does the school day look differently for those students compared to students who do not fall within that trauma category? Are the services that are provided, provided during the school day, are they taken into account with regard to how students are assigned to classrooms? These kinds of specific questions, I guess, is what I would be interested in. Thank you, and thank you again.
So there's a lot more we can talk about on the trauma, and I'm going to try to go through all this. One of the things I would say is that, as administrators and teachers and staff, we're trying to get our handle, or we're trying to get our hands on this. And I, I would be the first to tell you that our criteria right now is probably not 100% consistent, right? And, and so we know that we need to get more defined definitions on what we, or what we would collectively say that's, that's the trauma indicator. So I don't, I mean, this is kind of a dipstick of data for us right now, or, or for the board, and we're going to, and we intend to develop more concrete examples and criteria for what would, what would qualify there. So I, I don't know, we, this, this data may change. Again, I want to be really clear that this is our, our, our first step out of the gate. As far as accommodating in our, our students, we want to accommodate them in the, in, in the environment in which they're in. We don't want them to be necessarily getting, you know, services outside of the school day. We want them to be able to participate. That said, we're, we're looking at all of those kind of factors on how best our services can wrap around them to help them, how we can help them be successful from the very beginning of the day, where they don't have a, an event happen. And so we're, we're, we're talking about how that would happen, and that's part of, again, our, our pilot program. Again, I don't want to make, we're hoping we can begin to bend the curve, although we're wanting to do it as a pilot, so it won't, won't be in every school, which is kind of concerning, because we have, you know, we have, all schools have, have some concerns. But before we deploy it fully district-wide, we want to learn, collect, and then begin to respond, is the plan.
All right.
One thing with the PLPs, is it two hours per week of contact that you have per week, not per semester or whatever?
It's, it's per week, I think. Pat Phillips, is that, am I right on the personalized learning plans?
It's an hour.
Yeah. Thanks, Pat. Hour, Jerry.
Actually, 15 minutes.
Oh. Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Is there any, I know we have an interactive sheet, are there any modifications any board member would like to propose at this time to the proposed budget? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Go ahead, Megan. I, I motioned last time.
He's looking at me.
I was, I was bad luck.
I move that the board approve the proposed budget of $49,268,888 for the 2017-2018 school year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, administration. I think this was yeoman's work to pull together the responses. I think this is, in my 11 or 12 years of reviewing budgets, although we do have a challenge ahead in terms of sustainability, I believe this represents kind of the finest work of the district in terms of communicating with the public, and, and my hope is that the community will go to the polls and judge this budget on its merits.
May I say one more thing, too? I'm, I'm sorry, there are so many few, so few, so many fewer people than there were earlier for me to say this, but I'm, I want to say what might be the most important sentence that I'm going to say tonight, and that is, defeating this budget will not make me want to stop or delay our new mascot. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, and that is to consider the special meeting warning, and this is warned for action. Do we read the whole thing?
Probably should, yes. Sorry, Elizabeth.
All right, I will read the warning as proposed by the City of South Burlington School District 2017 for special meeting. The legal voters of the City of South Burlington School District are hereby notified and warned to meet at their respective polling places at the Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School on Dorset Street, the Orchard School on Baldwin Avenue, and the Chamberlain School on White Street on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 7:00 in the morning, at which time the polls will open, until 7:00 in the evening, at which time the polls will close, to vote by Australian ballot on the following article. Article 1, Budget. Shall the voters of the City of South Burlington School District approve the school board to expend $49,268,888, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $15,401.12 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 2.32% higher than spending for the current year. Polling places are the Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School at 500 Dorset Street, the Orchard School at 2 Baldwin Avenue, and the Chamberlain School at 262 White Street. Voters are to go to the polling place in their respective district. Do I have a motion to approve the special meeting warning?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned, thank you.